Welcome to the Village Board of Trustees. This is the regular meeting. I would ask everyone once again to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance as we open the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And once again, let us remain standing for those of you that are joining us now. Let us remember that seventy-nine years ago, President Roosevelt declared that December 7th, 1941, would, the day that Japanese attacked Pearl Harbor, would remain a date which will live in infamy. This evening, as Americans, please take a moment to remember the ultimate sacrifices our United States military servicemen and women made on this day and those days that followed the attack on Pearl Harbor. Thank you. Once again, I'd like to have a roll call vote. Trustee Barone.
Present.
Trustee Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Albert.
Present.
Trustee Salomon.
Present.
With me, I have the village clerk, Ms. Amy Paffenroth, and on the agenda. Well, we'll go through the upcoming meetings. The next workshop meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 28th at 7:00 PM. And the regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees will be held on Monday, January 4th at 7:00 PM. I would ask permission from the board to jump to number six, the Police Department, and letter C, authorizing the nomination and appointment of Police Officer William Samora to Sergeant. And I have Chief Lachlan with me. Chief? Would you like to say a few words?
At this time, it's my great pleasure to request that the Village Board appoints Police Officer William Samora to the position of Police Sergeant effective December 7th, 2020. This promotion will fill a vacancy created by the promotion of Sergeant Martinez to the position of Lieutenant in November of this year. Officer Samora is a lifelong resident of the Village of Suffolk and currently resides here with his wife and two children. Officer Samora joined the Suffolk Police Department in 2014 and has been assigned to patrol ever since. In addition to his duties as patrol officer, Officer Samora also serves as one of the department's field training officers, a general topics instructor, the PBA president, and he also acts as the department's Assistant Accreditation Manager for the New York State Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. Prior to becoming a Suffolk police officer, Officer Samora served the community, the Suffolk community, as a volunteer with the Roundpoole Valley Ambulance Corps and later as a paramedic with the Rockland Paramedic Service. He is also currently an active member of the Suffolk Fire Department and the Hook and Ladder Company. Lastly, in addition to his dedication to emergency services within the Village of Suffolk, Officer Samora is a member of the United States Air Force Reserves, where he has served our country since 2007 and is currently a Master Sergeant. He is currently assigned as a First Sergeant and acts as his squadron commander's principal advisor on enlisted matters. Officer Samora has been deployed overseas to combat zones for multiple tours of duty since joining the Air Force, and despite this, has been able to manage his work, family, and volunteer responsibilities, which is a true testament to his character. Officer Samora has consistently gone above and beyond what is required as a patrol officer, and in my opinion, is very deserving of this promotion.
Thank you, Chief. So I have the resolution before me nominating and appointing William Samora to the position of Police Sergeant, whereas the Village Board of Trustees, in their capacity as police commissioners, have determined to provisionally nominate and promote a member of the Police Department to the Sergeant's position that is now vacated by Jose Martinez's appointment to Police Lieutenant. And therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, in their capacity as police commissioners hereby nominates and appoint Suffolk police officer William Samora to the provisional rank of Police Sergeant effective December 7th, 2020. And be it further resolved, the starting salary for William Samora as provisional Police Sergeant is $159,982, and his compensation and benefits shall be in accordance with the existing collective bargaining agreement with the Suffolk Police Benevolent Association. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, and on the discussion. I would like to say that I don't think there's a better pick for the Police Sergeant to serve in that role as Police Officer Samora. With his military service, I thank him for that service of thirteen to fourteen years, his volunteer paramedic service, his service to our community in the Suffolk Fire Department, and of course, his service in the Police Department. Thank you, Mr. Samora, uh, Police Officer Samora, doing the Sergeant. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations. I will have the village clerk now swear in Sergeant Samora.
I, William Samora. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Village of Suffolk Police Sergeant.
Congratulations.
Um, at this time, I would just ask that Mrs. Samora can, Sergeant William Sergeant Samora, adjourn.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much for that jump on the agenda. Chief will be with us in a few moments when we get to his section. Okay. Bear with me, I messed up the resolutions here. Okay. Mr. Janito on the audited financial report?
Uh, yes, Mayor. We have Donna Lee Barrard of Barrard and Associates with us tonight. Donna Lee, you should be able to unmute yourself at this point, and there we are. We see you on the screen.
Hey, yep. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, so as a way of introduction, our fiscal year runs from June 1st through May 31st, and our most recently completed fiscal year was May 31st, 2020. As, as required by law, we do a audited annual financial report. Barrard and Associates are the CPAs, independent CPAs, that audit our report. And as such, they typically like to present a very highly summarized form of information to the board in terms of how we did in this past fiscal year. So with that, I'll leave it to Donna Lee to go ahead.
All right, great. I'm hoping that everybody has a copy of the report so I can quickly run through these sections. If not, I also want to just make the offer that if anybody wants more details or if they want to contact, contact me, please do. We're actually proud to be a Suffolk-located firm as well, so we, we like to support Suffolk. The audit report is, got many components to it. The start, you know, the first part right at the, at the beginning is going to be the actual audited letters. The page that I would turn you to, if you have that with you, is page nine. The second paragraph on page nine is our opinion letter. And in the opinion, just read this quickly, it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, the financial, respective financial position of the government activities each major fund in the aggregate meaning fund information of the Village of Suffolk as of May 31st, 2020." So this is the unqualified opinion that you, that you want on your audit report. The next section of the audit, I'm not going to actually review. It's called an MDNA. It's Management's Discussion. It talks a little bit about the village and some of the highlighted numbers in summary. The next section, I'm not going to really go over much either. It is the, the, the financial statements actually contain two sets of financial statements. One is the GASB governmental required accrual basis, and the, those, those statements are paid, found on page nineteen and twenty. They're really not something the board is, is really concerned with at this time. On the accrual basis, the, we include a lot of the employee benefit costs, your future accruals for lifetime, and actually has, books a lot of liabilities in there. You know, if we were to look at those pages, it would show that you actually had a $14 million loss for the year. We added to the other 28 million of accumulated, $42 million loss. It's not really reality. It's not what you're concerned with regarding to the budgets. What's really important is if we take a look at the financial statements, if we go to page twenty-nine. So that would be really where we want to look. These are the fund statements. These are the, the financials that are computed and compared to your budget, to which your taxpayers have agreed, and these are the, really the key numbers. So just to give you a second to get to that, that page. This, this runs across two pages, but on the page twenty-nine, if, in the third column, we look at that actual column, third number from the bottom, net change in fund balance. We're showing this year that Suffolk is showing a positive change in fund balance, lack of a better word, a profit of $1,465,000. So you actually had a pretty good year for the general fund this year. Just in, in quick summary, the revenues actually were pretty much on target to the budget. You were slightly over about $300,000 over budget, and a lot of that is associated with the investment of your funds. You actually, Michael made some changes to the investment funds, and you actually generated about $200,000 more than you had budgeted there. You also had some small miscellaneous revenues, some prior year refunds and donations, one-time things that popped up the revenue a little bit, but you're pretty tight on the revenue. What is really good to see is on the expenditure side. Your total expenditures were $13,562,000, actually at 1.3 million less than you had actually budgeted for. A lot of that is just overall payroll savings throughout all the various line items. You also, your health insurance was under budget by about $287,000, and then there was the related taxes on the reductions in the payroll, as well as some savings of the transportation line. So that 1.3 million of expense savings, plus the revenue being under, but over budget by 300,000, you actually did, that's, that's what helped generate this $1.4 million profit. When we add that to your accumulated fund balance, the second line from the bottom on page, that page twenty-nine of almost 6 million, you currently have about 7.4 million of total fund balances, and we're going to talk about the detail of that in a minute. Just hold that thought if you had questions there. Quickly, on the water fund, you actually showed a $220,000 profit again, third line from the bottom. This is on page thirty, under the water fund, the actual $220,000 profit for the year, which is, which is good to see. You actually were under budget on the revenue. There was various reasons for actually collections being slightly less than what you had anticipated, but you also had some offsetting expenses that, again, were not incurred, and you didn't have to use a contingency of almost 200,000, so that you actually, even though your revenue was under budget, you still were able to show a $220,000 positive change. Almost identical to the sewer fund, you have about an $85,000 positive change in fund balance there as well. That helped reduce, you had a negative 267,000, so now you're a, you're a negative balance in the sewer fund is 182. And you know, I know you've got plans to continually keep, keep making that better. I think that summarizes most of the, the key things on the revenue side that we wanted to peek at. What I just wanted to take two minutes on, which is important for us to understand, is on page twenty-one. Twenty-one is the balance sheet for the funds, and the only one I'm really going to focus on right now is the general fund, that first column. You had about nine and a half million dollars worth of assets in the, in the general fund. Your liabilities were about 2 million, and that nets you second line from the bottom, the total fund balance of that $7,400,000 that we just talked about when we were looking at the income and expenses. However, what's important, although that number looks big, what's important for us to look at is you actually have a lot of this money accounted for either for some kind of advance or restricted by some kind of purpose or some kind of needs that actually brings down an unassigned balance of actually $3,718,000. So that's a little bit healthier than you had last year, and I think that, that this is great for the village. You've actually had a couple of very positive years here. Although 3.7 million looks like a big number, I think you really need to think twice about what's in there, you know. As a cash flow reserve, you generally want to, you know, keep a minimum of two to three months, and that's just about two and a half months. You also, next year, you're going to be adding, you, you added a resolution to add a capital compensated absences reserve of about half a million dollars. So kind of built in there unofficially, you'll be doing that again next year. And if you were to look at these excess funds, remember that these things, you need money set aside for emergencies if things happen, and you need to pull out of your past reserves. You may need them. You also want to consider things, if you were to spend down any of that money, you might want to think about paying down some debt. I think that's, you know, an important thing to keep working on, as well as saving money for your capital projects. You don't necessarily want to go out and bond those. Sometimes you want to self-fund them, and to do that, you need to build up some of these reserves. So although it looks like kind of a big number, in reality, if you think about how you want to spend this in the upcoming future, it's really not a lot of money. If anybody have any questions on that, I think this is the key discussion for my presentation. That's great. If anybody thinks of one, feel free to give me a call. Just a couple of notations here, things that I thought were, were good for the, for the village. On page fifty, you have some short-term bands, bond anticipation notes. Actually paid about $100,000 down on that. You started at about 1.3 million, you're down to 1.2 million. That's great news. Also, what you did this year on page fifty-one is you actually took your long-term debt in the, in the middle paragraph here under the bond payable section is what I'm really looking at, the total bonds. You started at 8.2 million, you got it down to just under 7 million. Actually paid down about 1.3 million dollars down on those bonds. So you're getting actually quite a much healthier liabilities on these. And if you remember, this was a good year because you did that refunding for those bonds. You were able to take some, a couple of old bonds that had some rates at like four and 2.75% and be able to convert them into a new bond at 1.46. So you actually did a bunch of really nice things this year, and you had a very positive bottom line. That's all I really wanted to present. If anybody had any other questions, I'm glad to answer them. Those are the key highlights.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to especially thank Treasurer Janito for doing such a fine job navigating the money situations here in Suffolk and, and doing such a great job.
Yes, and I also want to thank Mike and his team. They really make the audit process very, go very smoothly, and I'm hoping that it works smoothly on his end as well. But, but again, thank you to him and his team for, for all they did with us.
Thank you, Donna Lee. Thank you for, for, for taking the time and going through the audit. And thank you, Mr. Janito. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you both. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, next up is Chief Koffler from the Suffolk Volunteer Fire Department.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, just one item on the agenda for this evening, and that is to accept the membership of Edison Chikaisa, an over eighteen member of the Volunteer Hose Company.
So do I have a motion to accept Edison Chikaisa as an over eighteen member, Volunteer Hose Company?
Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you. Good evening. Have a great evening.
Oh, thank you. Thank the guys for the, for the most recent fires and the great response on Thanksgiving Day and the day after, no, a few days after on the other.
Yeah, last Tuesday. I will. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Also, that was wonderful, uh, community involvement as well with the parade. Uh, that was, that was a lot of fun. Everyone.
Agreed. We definitely had a good time. Thank you.
Yeah.
Wish it would have been a little warmer for you guys.
I was warm.
Yes, we were not. But I think that following that thread, Jeremy, following the thread that you guys did was really, really great because we got so excited when we thought, oh, my gosh, they're right around the corner. It was, it was really, it was.
Ryan did a great job with that.
Yeah, he did. He did, and he was calling people out and just, you know, like, hey, we're coming, Fred. You know, like, it just, it was really great.
Good. I'm glad everybody enjoyed it.
Yeah, in this environment, it felt like it was something special, for sure.
Terrific.
We, we needed that with everything that's going on.
I agree. I agree. So.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Culture and Recreation, Ms. Kathy Mills.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board.
Hello.
Hello. So a few things that we have coming up. We have our exercise classes. We are maintaining them Mondays and Wednesdays at 10:00 AM, the chair exercise. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have chair yoga at 10:00. And then on Fridays, Zoom Chair Yoga is on Fridays at 10:00 AM. Uh, we had the, a few events this weekend, which we were thrilled with. Friday night, the village was lit up for the holidays over at Avon Park. So for those residents that haven't been downtown, please try to drive around. The village looks festive. It looks happy. Uh, we're working on, some of the stores are putting music outside during the day and the evenings, just to have some festivities going on down the village. Uh, so that was on Friday night. Again, Jeremy and Andrew, fantastic job Friday, uh, Sunday with the drive-around, the police and the fire department. You guys did a great job. It was, it was a joy to, to wait for the trucks to come around to the neighborhood, so great job on that. Um, and then yesterday, Sunday, was Pearl Harbor Ceremony in Suffolk Village Hall. It was a fantastic afternoon. Joe, Steve, Mayor, it was just a fantastic day to see all of you. It was phenomenal. Mr. Galella, who is a Pearl Harbor survivor, is 99 years old. He will be 100 in a couple of weeks, and he is so thrilled every year when Suffolk asks him to attend our ceremonies. So we were all just in awe of him as we always are, and we're happy to put the ceremony together. So I was just thrilled yesterday with the ceremony, and Mr. Galella was thrilled as well. So from his family to all of us and to all on the board, he just thanked us so much for that. So thank you. Uh, we have a couple of things coming up that we're working on with the schools. Uh, there is a coloring contest that's out on the backpack right now, and kids are invited to color some, pay, color a coloring page. Send it back to us in Recreation, and then we're going to finish that up in a couple of weeks. So send in your, your drawings. We've been getting a lot of great drawings so far, so thank you to the residents that are doing that. Uh, we have an ugly sweater contest coming up. I know some of us have nice sweaters, some of us have ugly sweaters, but December 18th is actually Ugly Sweater Day. So we're going to have an ugly sweater contest. We have the flyer out on the backpacks as of tomorrow. And it's for, just a fun thing for the holidays, people to get in the spirit and to come together as a community, just do something fun. So look for that in the backpacks, and it's going up on the website tomorrow. Uh, we are working with the Chamber of Commerce on decorations for the village, and they, again, we lit up the lights at the Avon Park and the other parks. The Chamber is doing a phenomenal job of getting in touch with all their shops, all of their groups, and they're decorating the village as well. So as a combined effort with Village Departments and the Chamber, the village is looking great this, this holiday season. Uh, we are, we have letters to Santa. So there is a mailbox over in the gazebo area, so anyone that would like to write a letter to Santa, he will, in some fashion, give back to children who write a letter to Santa. So please stop by. We are taking them very seriously and making sure they get to the right people so that Santa gets a response back to the kids. So participate in that. It's fun. Uh, and then we have, this Saturday, Connor School is going to be using the parking lot of Leo Leiden to do a coat drive, so anyone that has extra coats, extra clothing, please participate. As we all know, with all the food drives and the toy drives and the clothing drives that have been on, people are needing a lot more this, this holiday season. So if you have any extra clothing or extra coats, Connor School will be using the Leo Leiden parking lot. They're not going in the building. Again, they're just having people pull up. They're getting the bags and they're putting it into a truck. So, you know, we're, we're glad that we can let them use the, the outdoor part of the facility for that clothing drive. And that is it for now. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
You guys did a great job, DPW. Everybody's just been, through this holiday season of odd, has just been really great. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you very much. All, everybody together, it's been a, it's been a fantastic season working together with all the different departments. So kudos to everyone that has participated in all these things.
Yeah, so thank you. Thank you to the Street Department and DPW for a fine job of, of lighting up the village, um, working closely with Recreation. Thank you. And then, of course, the Chamber of Commerce and Good Samaritan Hospital also was helping us out. So it's bringing that festive moment, that, that holiday season and cheer to the Village of Suffolk. So thank you for all that were involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Village Board.
And the Pearl Harbor event was, was outstanding. Very good job, Kathy.
Thank you, and to, to Nancy and Elaine, myself, DPW, it really was. It was just phenomenal. So thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Mr. Bruce Simon will be providing a community foundation update. Mr. Simon?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Board. Congratulations, Mr. Salomon.
Thank you.
Just happened to notice on the calendar, it was 11 years ago today that I was sworn in, so keep that seat warm.
Okay.
It's a good one to have. Uh, speaking tonight on behalf of the Village of Suffolk Community Foundation, those of you that don't know, the village has its own 501(c)(3) nonprofit. It is not part of the village. We are a separate operation. Our goal is to help people throughout the village. In November, we worked with Sacred Heart Church. On their food drive, we fed 75 families. And while that sounds great, and I'm thrilled that all the people came out and helped us, problem is that the issue of hunger is, still exists in our community. They are having a Christmas basket food collection, a drive-through in the Sacred Heart parking lot this Saturday, December 13th, sorry, Sunday, December 13th, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM in the parking lot at Sacred Heart. Turkeys, hams, potatoes, canned vegetables, gravy, dried milk, canned soups, pasta and sauce, tuna, peanut butter, jelly, boxed cereals, dessert foods, and supermarket gift cards. The problem of hunger in our community is still. is still serious and still great, and any help is greatly appreciated. Again, we're collecting on Sunday, December 13. We're distributing on Saturday, December 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. So any help you can offer would be great. Now on to the future. Future is, in 2021, as Deputy Mayor Barone teased last month, yes, I'm looking at you, Charlie, the, the Community Foundation is launching a virtual marathon. What that means is, people are going to be asked to travel the distance at their own pace, on their own location. They don't have to do it in one day or one week. The goal here is 26 miles, which is what a marathon is, in 26 weeks. So from January 1 to July 1, that's exactly 26 weeks. If you average one mile a week, you make the 26 miles. This is our big push for next year. We will be selling shirts in, to go along with this, about the Suffolk Marathon. It's the first annual. The money we raise will go towards children's programming in 2021. Kids have had a really rough year, not that anybody else has it, but we are looking at things like music programs, art programs, photography, self-defense, pottery, you name it. If it involves and helps children, we are looking at it, physical fitness programs. I know trustee Corrigan, trustee Barone, were on board for this, and I appreciate that. The rest of the foundation is on board for it. We will be announcing more details about the marathon later this week. Look for the website, SuffolkMarathon.com. And I'm hoping that the village will link to it from the village website. It'll be on all your favorite social media as well. The goal here is to raise as much money as we can, to put on as many programs as we can, to help young children, even teenagers, help families do things that they normally wouldn't do. If there are any questions, email SuffolkMarathon@gmail.com, and we will get right back to you. Does the board have any questions for me?
No questions. Just a wow. Outrageous and awesome.
You're very.
It's gonna be so much fun. And I think, again, bringing the community together, right? It's just, I can't wait. I can't wait to join.
There's a space waiting for you, Ms. Corrigan.
Yes, and Fraser will also be a participant.
We'll have to get a four-legged shirt for him.
He's okay with two.
I want to go back to something. I just want to make sure everybody understands. When I say marathon, this is a virtual event, meaning you do it in your location, at your pace.
Yeah.
So we're not expecting anyone to run 26 miles. I don't think I could drive 26 miles without needing hospitalization some days. It's up to the people to do at their own, own pace. The, the ultimate goal is get people moving, get more physical fitness, get more exercise. Every one of us, if you spoke to your doctor, they would say more steps are better than less steps.
Yep.
If you go to the supermarket, if you walk up and down every aisle in the supermarket, that's about a mile. So if you think this is something that's physically beyond you, I promise you, one mile a week is an easy thing to do. Like I said, more details will be later this week at SuffolkMarathon.com. More information, SuffolkMarathon@gmail.com. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. I was muted. Okay. Next up is Chief Lachlan from the Suffolk Police Department. Chief?
Evening, everyone. For the month of, I'm sorry, the month of November, the Police Department responded to 651 calls for service. Call types varied from routine in nature to emergency calls. We made several arrests charging multiple individuals with menacing, criminal possession of a weapon, harassment, aggravated harassment, criminal possession of a controlled substance, unlawful possession of marijuana, breach of peace, aggravated unlife-stopping of a motor vehicle in second and third degrees, larceny, criminal possession of stolen property, aggravated assault, and criminal contempt. We also conducted several warrant investigations, which resulted in the execution of multiple warrants and the arrest of several individuals. On the community policing side of things, as you all know, our toy drive is in, in full swing. We have held several events so far, one at Walmart. We held a contactless drop-off for seniors at the senior center. And like Kathy and Jeremy spoke about, we participated in the, the Santa parade that the fire department put on, and we got an, actually, a great response from the residents. I don't know if you're familiar with our, our, our police trailer, but we, we filled the entire trailer with gifts. So, and that's due to the generosity of the, of the residents. Having said that, we anticipate this year's list of recipients to be larger than in the past due to COVID and, and the kind of year everyone's having. So we just asked if anybody's able to, that they drop off any new unwrapped toys at the police department. We're also setting up an Amazon wishlist, so residents can send in unwrapped toys, new toys, if they're not comfortable stopping under the police department. That's all I have for the update. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The toy drive is so important for all of us.
Mayor, Mayor, I see you talking, but you're muted. If you're trying to talk.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was just saying thank you to the Police Department and for the toy drive and the participation. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
And membership. And the next on the, I have the resolution before me, authorizing the nomination of Julio Vares to the position of police officer full-time. Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby nominates Julio, Julio Vares to the position of police officer full-time pending final certification and qualifications by the Rockland County Personnel. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, any further on the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next resolution, authorizing the nomination, nominating of Peter Barber to the position of dispatcher part-time. Board of Trustees hereby nominates Peter Barber to the position of dispatcher part-time pending final certification and qualifications by Rockland County Personnel. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second. Second, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Next resolution, authorizing an increase in police officer part-time starting salary. Board of Trustees authorizes an increase in police officer part-time salary starting, starting salary to $32 per hour. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, any further discussion?
I would like to ask you, what was the previous per hour amount?
I think it was 18?
No, it was approximately, it was approximately $24 an hour.
That's a big jump from 24 to 32 per hour.
If I could explain that when we went to hire part-time police officers, we would get no takers because the county average is 32.
I understand.
All in favor?
How long, how long, Chief Lachlan, how long was it 24? In other words, how long was it steady at that old number? Just curious.
I don't know exactly, but I can tell you that, and I, I have not seen them get a raise in quite many years. Also, in the past, they have gotten the same percentage raises as the full-time police officers. So if you can imagine if the board, if the, the PBA membership got a 2% raise in their contract, 2% of $24 an hour doesn't amount to much of a raise, so they fall quite a bit behind.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a safe night.
You're sure. Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Michael Janito, Village Treasurer.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We have before you a resolution to amend the budget for garbage truck repairs. He brought this up at the workshop. Essentially, we have two garbage trucks that are in need of emergency repairs, and the board did, by an email exchange between myself and the board, yourself, approve it. So this resolution is essentially going to move $23,000, $15,000 from the salt budget, which I've been advised by the DPW supervisor that we are, we have plenty of salt for the winter, and $15,000 from that budget, and another 8,000 from the Street Department budget into the solid waste budget for the repair of the garbage trucks.
Okay, so I have the resolution amending the 2020, 2021 budget for garbage truck repairs. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Sauberman.
Trustee Sauberman, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. The other item on the agenda is a resolution to accept a donation from the Beth Havrim Shere Shalom in the amount of $2,350. We are, that is for our first responders. So we would take those funds, if accepted by the board, and amend the budget to allow the fire department to use half of those funds and the police department to use the other half of those funds. And so there's two things here. One is to accept the donation, and the second thing is to amend the budget to allow the two departments to utilize the funds as intended this year.
Hey, so I have a resolution before me, accepting the donation from Beth Havrim Shere Shalom of Mawa for use by the police department and the fire department. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Sauberman.
Trustee Sauberman, any further on the discussion?
Yes, I did want to mention that Jonathan Theodore is here as a representative from Beth Havrim Shere Shalom, if, if, if he'd like to say a few words perhaps on this.
Sure.
He's, I, I see him. I can ask on mute. I don't know. Mike, you may have to unmute him.
Okay. I'm muted.
Okay.
Okay, let me show my beautiful face as well.
First, we want to thank, we want to thank you very much, Jonathan, on behalf of Beth Havrim.
Okay, definitely. I just wanted to just briefly say that November 1st, our synagogue, Beth Havrim Shere Shalom, who, as you know, is very aligned with the Village of Suffolk, were involved in the Suffolk Toy Drive, as well as the Soup Kitchen and various events that happen around the village, because a large percentage of our membership lives right here in the village. So on November 1st, we had an event in lieu of the New York City Marathon. We had, we created our own one-third mile loop around the property to, and 56 people were either walking or running around through the one-third mile loop, and over 180 sponsors for these individuals based on laps completed. On a very cool, very rainy day, we raised $9,400 to be shared evenly across Valley Hospital, Good Sam, and first responders from Mawa and Suffolk. And I'm very happy for us to make the contribution of $2,350 to the Village of Suffolk. And I have the check right here in my possession, and I'll be dropping it by probably tomorrow morning or one morning early, later this week to, to Mr. Janito. And thank you very much for the opportunity to participate and, and contribute on behalf of my synagogue and my community.
Well, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Theodore, and please thank your, your community and, and your synagogue for that generous donation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you once again.
Mayor, we also have one other resolution, which I sent to you this afternoon. I'm sorry for the late sending of that. But in any event, for many years, we had utilized industrial UI services as consultants and to represent us in unemployment claims. And with the passing of our former village clerk, Virginia Menschner, for whatever reason, the paperwork was lost in transit, so to speak, and the contract had not been renewed. And basically, this is asking to renew that contract effective January 1, 2021, and the amount is $2,000 a year. So it's, it's well worth it, because what they do is they look at all the laws, rules, and regulations involving unemployment, the eligibility of people that are applying for unemployment, where we would have to pay for that, and where appropriate, they challenge it. And if, if it is appropriate, then they advise us as to that it is indeed appropriate. So it's, the services are well worth it. We use, as again, utilize them for many years, and they save us a lot of money over the years.
Okay. I have that resolution in front of me, appointment of industrial UI services as unemployment representatives. Do I have a motion?
Trustee Sauberman.
Trustee Sauberman, do I have a second?
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion?
Yeah, I was just kind of curious. So is this an item that's identified in our budget and just wasn't being funded or, I mean, paid for? Or I'm just a little confused about.
Yes, no, we, we have a budget for unemployment insurance, and we're self-insured for unemployment as a municipality. So the money that comes out of our unemployment line is the money to actually pay for claimants, as well as to pay for the professional services that, such as industrial UI services.
I just wanted to make sure it was, it was budgeted. That's all.
Yes, indeed. Thank you. I, for one, would not put anything before you.
I didn't think so. I just wanted to make sure, because it wasn't mentioned. Thank you.
And one other, one last item that we have.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't vote. We didn't officially vote. We, we had a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
The other thing, Mayor, that I just want to bring to everybody's attention is an update in the fact that in November, we went out for our annual bond anticipation note. Every year, we, we go out with a certain amount of a note. We pay down, as was mentioned by Donalee Barard's, a certain amount. And then we also sometimes add additional funds. In any event, last year, when we went out with a bond anticipation note, the rate that we received for a year was 2%. This November 19th, we went out with a note, our rate is 0.55% for the year. So we're doing very well there. And part of that, by the way, is related to how they view our credit and looking at our results. And so it's all coming around to us being on a very good side of the ledger, so to speak. And I got to say, it's, it's not just everybody's work and finance and so forth. It's everybody's work. This board, yourself and the board who have given the leadership and, you know, the presentation to everybody that it's so important to keep our finances in shape, right down to every single department head and employee, I have to say, by and far, they are very cognizant of how they spend our funds and how important it is to keep those public funds safe. So I got, have, have to thank everybody for their assistance.
Mike, if we are a well-tuned orchestra who's running the finances in the village in a great way, you're the conductor. Thank you.
Okay. I, I hope we don't have any sour notes along the way. Thank you. Thank you, Will. That's it, Mayor, for us.
I have a question, Mike. This is a bond that we are going to float?
No, it's actually called a bond anticipation note. Typically, what you do is you authorize bond resolutions to borrow money long-term. But before borrowing the money long-term, you typically borrow money on a short-term basis, one year at a time. And there's actually a benefit to that. A, a bond, typically, you're going to get for, let's say, 20, 15, or 20 years, you're going to pay a higher rate of interest for that over the 15 or 20 years. Whereas a note, being such a short-term, you get a very, about half the rate you would get on a bond, or even less. So, yeah, this, this is a note. What's going to happen is, next year, actually, one of the items in this note is the fire truck. That's a big number. It's $875,000. So we will probably take the fire truck along with a couple of other major items and bond those over 15 or 20 years.
So this is a one-year note, right?
Yes.
How much is the amount of the note?
I'd have to look it up. It was just over $2 million.
I just wish we could have gotten that for, you know, 10 years or 15 years, but it's only a one-year deal, huh?
It's only a one-year deal. And actually, the long-term rates are very good, and they're expected to stay good for quite a while. You may have followed the Federal Reserve, and last year, they said that the rates were going to remain close to zero, if not zero, for at least through the year 2021, and possibly into 2022. And now, seeing how the COVID epidemic is impacting everybody, there isn't any desire on the part of the Federal Reserve to raise those rates.
Yeah. Thanks.
So it's, it's actually not good for us who are saving. So it's, it's actually not good for us who are saving, but it's great for us to have, who have to borrow money.
Borrow.
True.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for your good work, Mike.
Quite welcome, everyone.
Okay, next, I'd like to open up the meeting to public participation. Mr. Janito, if you can recognize the raised hands?
Mayor, so if you wish to speak, just raise your hand and I'm going to unmute you. This is, I believe Catherine, but Catherine, you're unmuted. If you'd identify yourself?
Hi, Catherine from eight, from Seven Sussex Court, Suffolk, New York. I just, Michael, I just wanted to hear your take since the last time we spoke about the COVID impact with the village of Suffolk and I know you've been participating and the boards have been participating in other meetings. I just wanted to know where we are right now.
Yes, yes, sure. The short of it is that the the major concern that we have regarding COVID is not so much the expenditure side, but the revenue side. And of that revenue, as you probably are aware, we have some major revenues in terms of things like mortgage tax and sales tax. The unfortunate thing is that the sales tax comes to us quite a few months after the close of the quarter. For instance, the sales tax that we received in August was for the quarter that ended in May. So we are now going to be receiving, very shortly, our sales tax for the next quarter that ended. And that'll give us a better idea where we stand. To give you a little bit of a, an insight into what has happened is we know that the last quarter, the one that ended May of 2020, was down 27% from the previous year same quarter. And that was significant, but fortunately for us, we were very conservative in budgeting for sales tax and our budget came in pretty much on target for that. Even though we technically lost more money this year than last year. The first quarter of this year, we were down about 12 and a half percent. That's the one that, that we're being told by the county. So we're having things there. Mortgage tax is another large number for us. The problem with mortgage tax, that's only reported every six months and according to the county, they don't have a clue as to which way it's going until the six-month period ends, which is probably going to be very soon for, for this fiscal year. So those are the unknowns and mortgage tax could go either way. You know, the interest rates are very low and it could be that people are financing or refinancing homes because of a great opportunity. And then you have the opposite side where people don't have the money to pay their mortgage and maybe selling out their properties and you know, abandoning their properties or their mortgage payments. In any event, it still remains to be seen where that's going. In terms of others, you know that things like when the pool was closed, we didn't bring in the revenue for the pool, but then again, that was a net cost item. So in essence, our budget would look more favorable on that. This is going to be, November 30th is our six-month ending of our fiscal year, six months ended. And we are now going through anything that came through since then, including our bank statements and so forth. And once we have those finalized, we will have a very good picture. And while we intended to get something ready for the board on the first quarter, there were so many other dynamics changing. It was better just to wait until this end of six months. So in the month of December, we'll have, in layman's terms, a report summarized for the board where we are in both the revenue side and expenditure side of things.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Very helpful. Thank you so much.
Okay, mayor, I'm looking to see if there's any, I don't see any other hands at the moment. If you, oh, here we go. Michael, Michael, if you would identify yourself, please?
My name is Michael Curley. And can you hear me, Mike?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. We all know that being a mayor trustee is, is a public service. We also know that being a mayor is a tough task with many responsibilities and that being said, I think we need to, as a village, consider making the mayor's salary higher to reflect the job responsibility that the job entails. Villages as a whole are getting more complex, especially with zoning and planning. I think we need to consider this to make sure the mayor has a time and dedication to keep our village strong. I say this with no malice to anyone, only a desire to keep our village ahead of our ever-changing times, including with sewer plants, contracts, and all the et cetera, et cetera, responsibilities that goes along with it, okay? The mayor's job is a full-time job, a job and a half, actually. It needs to be compensated for, for this, for the, for the future. If someone chooses not to accept the salary, they can always assume not to accept the extra salary. But I think in these times, there's, there's so much to do there and so much work. It's not an eight-hour week, a 10-hour week. Even the trustees, they have, you know, more responsibilities and maybe that could be looked at at some point also. I know a few years back, people lowered their salaries and, but I got up there and, you know, whatever. I mean, they didn't give us back your whole salary, but they gave some of it back. But I think it needs a substantial increase to reflect the times and the responsibility that goes along with the job. And I think it'll, I think it'll, 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 they need to do a lot more reading, a lot more work. And I'm telling you, especially with the zoning and planning, and not that I'm insulting any, any boards that are there, but the communication has to stay strongly open and with everything with the, again, with the sewer plants, with contracts, whatever it may be. And it's just a suggestion to start the, maybe start a conversation on it. And if it's, it's a no-go, it's a no-go. But at least start a conversation, understand. Maybe we look around to see what other communities are, are doing or what they give and, and what their responsibilities and what they entail. Thank you for your time. And just, just I wanted to, want to, Mr. Salverman, I wanted to welcome you to the board and just make sure, I hope to see you at the opening of the Suffolk Village Pool in 2021. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you very much. I'd like to swim.
Very good, sir.
Okay.
Okay, mayor, we also have Joseph Hunt, you know, the president of our local CSEA.
Okay.
Go ahead, Joe.
Mayor and board. Mayor, I'd like to thank you and Mike Janino to stabilize in this village in the last couple of years. CSEA has always worked well with leadership. I want to welcome Fred to the new Suffolk team. Welcome back, Steve. And can't forget Joe and Chuck. Thanks for staying on and being a part of this team Suffolk. Again, moving forward, we're willing to work with you in any way we need to, to stabilize and keep Suffolk great. Remember, you say this the best, mayor, all roads lead to Suffolk. And if we can't get them here, then, you know, it's my fault because they got too many potholes. Doing what you do. And again, I think you all deserve raises. I don't know how Michael is going to help lead this up and make this happen. But if I can do anything to make it work for you all, I will be here to support. Again.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Thank you.
All the projects that you support, mayor, throughout the village with recreation is awesome. They're doing an awesome job. And again, I can't thank the board and yourself and especially Michael because he fixed my computer today for me. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, membership, for all they do also, Joe. Thank you.
You got it.
Okay, Mr. Janito, is there anyone else?
Not at the moment, but I'll remind the audience on the app, you have a little icon that says raise hand. If you're on your phone, I'm sorry, on the computer, the same thing. If you're on a telephone, you can just hit star nine and that will show us a raised hand. So mayor, at the moment, I don't see anybody. If you want to give it another few seconds.
Okay, let's, let's move on and close the public participation. Next up is Mr. Charles Zawicki, Department of Public Works. Is Mr. Zawicki with us?
Mr. Zawicki, Charles, you've been asked to unmute yourself?
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I have a couple of items I want to update the board from the workshop. A, regarding the wastewater treatment plan, a monthly wastewater treatment plant report will be distributed to the mayor and the board a week before each monthly workshop meeting. And this will provide all the information that is currently available by that time. A list of current outstanding maintenance items, establishing item priority, projected schedule and associated costs is currently being compiled. Weekly meetings will be held to discuss the progress of all outstanding maintenance items. Any questions regarding that?
Charles, can you possibly let us know what happens on those weekly meetings, whether maybe?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're going to be, we have minutes and we'll be able to distribute those minutes, sure.
Okay, and you know, as well, you know, if the board has time, maybe they can be, you know, a silent partner and just listen in on those meetings whenever it's available for one of them?
Sure, once we set the meeting, we'll, we'll make that known to the board and, and maybe a board member or two can attend.
Perfect, yes.
Yeah, we had this big discussion, Charles and I and the operators, so we, as Charles was detailing the plan, that's what we're going to, going to put into motion.
Excellent, because I'd like to get to as many meetings as I possibly can. Thank you.
Okay. The other item is the, the tree assessment. I did receive Sandy's email this afternoon. Prior to that, I spoke with Jason Suckridge of Borlitt Tree Experts. He's the gentleman along with Borlitt who put together the tree risk assessment that we did in 2019. So we had some discussion about the concerns of, you know, the unbalanced crowns. So he had indicated to me that the unbalanced crowns, there might have been a risk to the trees that were serviced last season, potentially contributing to branch, stem or root failure would have been identified in the risk assessment report because of the potential risk liability to the village. These conditions then were addressed in the risk mitigation pruning. Crown pruning to improve canopy shape, particularly on the side growing towards residential homes is achieved by a common method known as crown spread reduction. There is no risk associated with this condition. It is strictly aesthetics. So, you know, moving forward, I know that we had some recommendations from the tree committee on this particular item. If the board would like to, again, address the, the crown spread reduction to address any particular aesthetics, we certainly could proceed with that. The other item is I do agree with the second item to proceed with an RFP for a risk, tree risk assessment and mitigation report. This will be similar to the one that was done in 2019 for trees identified by the tree committee. Is there any questions regarding that?
No, so the committee will be presenting that?
Well, I, what we've done for the report, when we proceeded with the 2019 report, we did receive recommendations from the tree committee on what areas to include into that, that assessment. And I think it would be, you know, it makes sense to do the same thing here. We have the committee could identify the areas that they want to proceed with. And we could, you know, eventually, if the board is in agreement, eventually we could identify additional areas in subsequent years to continue this similar type program over the next few years.
So you think it'd be advisable just to move forward now with the crown spread reduction and, and have that issue taken care of?
Yeah, I mean, it's, again, it's, I think the priority here was the liability to the village, but certainly if the board would like to be able to proceed with, with that, it is, as, as Jason had described, it's essentially aesthetic issue. And again, if the board would like to proceed with that, I certainly will.
So it's just an aesthetic issue, not a liability?
Right, but yeah, but I mean, there's sort of two parts to that. Yeah, that's the, there's the the work that has been complete, it was completed last year. And that's what I think Sandy had expressed a concern with in terms of the the unbalanced trees. So that would be one item that we can address, again, by you know, addressing the canopy spread reduction as, as Jason had indicated, we can do that. And then a second item would be moving forward, identifying a new area of the village that a complete tree risk assessment and mitigation report could be completed. That's, that's what I think would really, I mean, again, that, that would protect the village from any potential liabilities. And I think that it proved to be worthwhile in the 20, when we did in 2019. And I think it would, I would recommend doing it again here in 2021, 2021 essentially.
So I would agree with that, with the, the new tree assessment report and the the balancing of the trees.
Okay.
That's what I would agree with. I don't know how to board.
We're going to put, put out RFPs for both?
Well, the one, yeah, the, the tree risk assessment and mitigation would be a full-blown RFP. The other one I'd have to look at, the I'm sorry? The, the initial, that the tree spread reduction, I'd have to look at and see what is involved there. It might be just a matter of soliciting some, some quotes from some arborists. So if, if maybe I certainly would put the RFP together, but it would be certainly on a smaller scale.
And that all falls under the tree budget line?
Right, and we do have about 20
21,000.
20, yeah, it's just under 22,000, 21,959, I believe it is.
Okay. Okay, so we would like to move forward with that plan of action?
I think it's a good idea.
Right.
I believe, I just want to mention, I believe Sandy Stead is on this call. I don't know if she wants to chime in at all about this as the chair of the tree committee. I'm not sure if she's got anything prepared, but I did see that she's on the call. If Mr. Janito wants to ask.
Charles, do we need to have any further with Ms. Stead?
I, I don't believe so unless, unless she, she wants to add something. I think we got it covered.
I, yeah.
All right, I think we'll just move forward in that, in that direction and see, you know, we'll, we'll look at the creating an RFP and get some quotes and move forward from here.
Yes, we'll do.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the other items, requesting authorization to solicit bids for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and modification project, contract one with the due date of January 21st, 2021 at 3:00 PM.
I have that resolution in front of me, authorizing superintendent of public works to solicit bids for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades and modifications project, contract number one. Do I have a motion?
Motion trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Everyone remaining, I didn't came in kind of late. I'm not sure if it did make the agenda. Be requesting authorization to hire Mr. Travis Jennings to the vacant street and refuse department labor position. To the vacant street and refuse department labor position at an hourly rate of eighteen dollars and thirty nine cents. Effective December 9th, 2020.
So I have the resolution appointing Travis Jennings as a laborer effective December 9th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Solomon, so moves.
Trustee Solomon, do you have a second?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Okay, next up is the attorney. Mr. Magrino.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Um, and, uh, welcome, Mr. Solomon. I, uh. We'll be calling you shortly to introduce myself, but welcome to the board.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
You mixed up that way. I'm sorry, that was Michael Janito.
Uh, well, I was here before too, but, uh, it's jumping in to, um. The first item is, I meant the, uh, chapter 254, the vehicle and traffic. Law came up, uh, in terms of parking, came up last time. I recall it was either January or February, we were working on a number of changes to section 254 regarding parking. And obviously, uh, March came and, uh, and things changed, so. The way we had left it was to have, I think we need a meeting, um, you know, perhaps certainly with Amy and the chief. Um, and I, I know Trustee Corrigan's interested in this. Uh, frankly, I prefer an in-person meeting, but that doesn't look like it's going to happen. We can do a Zoom meeting. Just to go over all of it to make sure everybody understands where we're going. Uh, I didn't want to set a public hearing for it, uh, yet until we had a chance to meet. So that's why I just wanted to bring it up now because I know an issue came up about changing parking spots. I believe Mr. Barone came up with that before. So, um. Uh, I just wanted to bring that up if anybody had any questions, but that is the game plan is to try to meet either this month or next. Um, so that we can, it will be prepared or we'll be ready for a, uh, a public hearing.
Right, I think that's a great idea to review it a, a, in its totality, 254, and then we'll be fully prepared if that's okay with the board.
Yes, and I would like to do it after the holidays if that's okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah. And in that, we would visit putting a couple of, uh, more 15 minute spots in?
Right, that's right. Correct.
I'm good.
Sounds like a plan.
Uh, okay, the next item, um. Back on September 7th, uh, the governor, uh, signed into law, um, it, it's a mandate that Logan municipalities have to come up with detailed plans. Regarding future health disaster emergencies involving a communicable disease. Uh, quite similar to, uh, the action, uh, village was required to take, uh, in March and April of this year. And frankly, the village, uh, with the help of Amy, I know, uh, Mr. Glickle and several others, uh, came up with a, um. A plan, uh, to, um, for the employees and, and basically a policy. Uh, which was required to be developed basically on the fly and, and under difficult circumstances, but it was done and, and it came out very well. Um, the plan that this calls for, the governor is calling for, um, there are some time constraints on it. Um, it needs to be developed. I believe what the village should do really is have a, a team of, of planners, uh, start with the mayor. Uh, again, perhaps, uh, Amy, um, the chief, uh, a few others we can talk about, um, to develop the plan. Um, the good news is you don't have to start from scratch, not only because we have one already. But because, uh, there's a template that, um, they provided, so. Uh, would involve asking all department heads for their input. It would involve also asking the union for their input. Now I mentioned the timeline, um, this plan needs to be to the union by no later than February 4th. So, um, you know, that's, it's going to come up very quickly. So, uh, we'll need to get working on that. I just wanted to put that out there that that's something that needs to be done. After the union has a chance to chime in. And again, it has to do with many of the items that addressed already, um, staggered shifts. Uh, you know, people coming, uh, half on, half off, that type of thing. Um, so, uh, those are all things that, uh, will be addressed. Union will be able to have their input and then, uh, a plan will need to be, uh, adopted by the board and we present that to the board. Uh, probably in March. Finally, um, if you recall, I forget the last time we, if this was addressed, but the outdoor dining, uh, that was authorized. Originally back in, I believe it was June, um. Uh, was, uh, expired, uh, in terms of the, the village's authorization. Um, there's a resolution to allow that to continue, uh, for those who can, uh. Have the outdoor dining in parking lots or, or other areas that they have as part of their, um, restaurants, not, not the sidewalk dining. My understanding is, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, that there really has not been a request to continue that for the sidewalk.
Not on the sidewalk dining, that is correct.
Right, so this would just authorize it to April 5th, 2021. It's still, uh, authorized or permitted, um. By the governor's executive orders, uh, you know, look, we've all been through this, uh, everything is subject to change. But this would allow it subject to the governor permitting it. As, as it currently is permitted. So this, the, that resolution has been provided and it basically is similar to what was previously passed. It just authorizes it through April 5th. And, um, hopefully by then we'll be in a, a different position to, you know. Authorize either to continue or, or, uh, however the circumstances are at the time, we'll, we'll be able to.
Not resol- this resolution is with the accepting the exemption to sidewalk. Is that correct?
Just for the, this is just for the, um. A permit for temporary outdoor dining for, on, on their own premises.
Right. Just want to make that clear. The board, you, you have the resolution board members.
But, but if we wanted to, if we get an early and we get a nice spring and things aren't so wonderful, we can always come back and revisit sidewalk dining, correct?
Yes.
I just, I know, I just want to make sure.
Absolutely.
We don't want to lock anybody out that's not, you know, that has the ability to, to, you know, have the tent structure outside, have that, their own, on their own property.
Oh, of course, I want to give every opportunity that we possibly can give to anybody, you know?
Okay, so I have the resolution authorizing modifications to the villagers Suffolk table and chair program to assist. Local restaurants reopen in accordance with New York State Executive Order. Orders issued by the governor of the state of New York. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. I just wanted to go back to that local government mandate to prepare for the detailed plans regarding future hel- future health disasters. We have a detailed plan that we will be using to guide us through the template. Thanks to the village clerk, Amy Paffenroth, and all of the department heads. And the, and the personnel and the union already involved when we developed our reopening plan, which will be very instrumental. In submitting this new plan. I think we covered the majority of the issues in the template. So, um, big shout out to everyone involved in that reopening plan. What a great job. Thank you. Okay. That's it. Okay, trustees update. Does anyone like to have anything?
I'm good.
Okay.
My stuff tonight.
Alrighty.
Trust, Trustee Corrigan, didn't you have a, 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 a resolution you wanted?
No, the mayor's gonna manage that. Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Steve, did you want to talk about something?
Uh, well, I, it actually turned out to be the case. I brought something up in an email about a month ago. I was a little. Curious and maybe even put off why the labor attorney was attending all of our board meetings. I, I don't see the labor attorney on. Oh, actually, I think he is on. Maybe I do see him on. And, and, uh, I, I, I think, you know, it's fine for executive sessions and whatnot. But I think it's a waste of, uh, of money, quite frankly, to have a, uh, two attorneys on a board meeting when only one is probably required. And I had sent an email about this about a month ago and no, nobody replied, so I'm bringing it up now.
It's being addressed.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay.
Right, if I could just, uh, jump on, I appreciate the mayor saying I have had discussions. Um, and, uh, there are some ways that, uh, you know, sometimes. I'll request, uh, the labor attorney to be here if there's a labor matter on, um. Sometimes there may be something for executive session. So, um, we can address, perhaps if there is an executive session, and this came from, uh, Mr. Glickle, perhaps. To having that at the beginning of the meeting rather than at the end, something like that. Um, but that's definitely something that we'll be talking about.
Thank you. Okay. Next, I have a, um. Resolution authorizing the modifications to the consulting agreement with Christine Anderson that we spoke about briefly at the workshop. Authorizing the modification to the agreement with Christine Anderson to perform consulting services for the Suffolk Justice Court. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, I have a resolution here accepting the resignation of Ann Rizzo, Assistant Court Clerk, effective December 18th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Solomon, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, I have a resolution here continuing the retention of Richard A. Glickle as village's legal counsel for labor. And employment matters and for the other or different non-employment or labor related matters. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, any further round of discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? I oppose. Motion passes. Okay. Okay, next, I believe we are going into an ex- executive session. I have a motion to enter into an executive session.
Does indicate the reason, um. Losing.
Reason would, would be personnel, uh, personnel, um, reasons.
And litigation.
And litigation. I have a motion.
Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, I have a second.
Barone.
And Trustee Barone. We will, um, resume and come back into the regular meeting. Motion to, uh, exit executive session?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Barone, Corrigan, I'm just jotting it down, hold on. Okay, is there anything further that the board would like to say?
Well, I would just like to know how to get back on visually.
You're on.
You did it.
Yeah. See you, Fred.
Well, all right, I can't see anybody. All I see is scheduling made easy.
All right, we're, we're, we're gonna close the meeting now.
Okay.
All right, so motion to close the meeting?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert. Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
You as well.
Good night.